Thanks, Peter. It is now 6:03, so let's begin this regular meeting of the Deschutes County Planning Commission. Because Chair Hudson has recently resigned, I'll go ahead and open the meeting as vice chair. And we will begin with the approval of minutes from November 18th and December 9th of 2021. The minutes have previously been distributed, so I wanted to ask if there's any corrections to the minutes. Okay. So if there are no corrections, then the minutes are approved and we can proceed to elections for chair and vice chair. Nominations are in order for the position of chair. Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, Steve Swisher. I would like to nominate Vice Chair Jessica Kieris to be the chair.
Okay. Excellent. I will accept that nomination. Are there any other nominations? Waiting a little longer in case anyone thinks of anyone else they want to nominate. Head shaking. So if there aren't any other nominees... Oh, Dale is raising his hand. Yes.
Madam Vice Chair, I move we... The commission casts a unanimous ballot for the election of Jessica Kieris to be our chair.
I second.
Okay. So I guess we'll go to a vote then. I'll just go down the line so we can do this formally. So Commissioner Kirby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crawford?
Yes.
And then do we have, yep, Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I guess I'll declare myself the chair then.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Terrific.
How nice. So that was quick and easy. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item, which is going to be item number four, public comment. So typically, this is an...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I think we need to elect a vice chair.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was so excited about becoming chair that...
As you should be.
Thank you. So nominations for vice chair are now in order.
Madam Chair, Steve Swisher, I nominate Susan Altman.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Altman, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Okay, excellent. Are there other nominations for vice chair? So I see no other nominations for vice chair, so perhaps we could just, for the sake of being formal, go down the line again. Well, we need a motion, first of all. Is there a motion to...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move we cast a unanimous ballot for Susan Altman for vice chair.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Excellent. So it has been moved and seconded that we cast a unanimous ballot for Susan Altman for vice chair. Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Crawford?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Excellent. So it's unanimous. Commissioner Altman is now vice chair of the planning commission. Would anyone like to say anything else before we move on to item four? Okay, so let's move to item four. I am curious, do we have any members of the public who would like to make a comment about any item not on the agenda tonight?
We have a number of people in Zoom.
We do have some attendees, yeah.
We... Yes. Chair Kieris, one moment as we elevate members of the public one at a time.
And if there are members of the public here who are participating because they would like to make a comment about the dark skies item, that is an item that is on the agenda. Typically, this part of the meeting has been for items that are not on the agenda. And there was a great brief, but great discussion two meetings ago about what to do when members of the public attend and would like to make a comment about an item that's on the agenda but is not part of a public hearing. So I would like to have a longer conversation with the planning commission about this topic. I think it's actually a really important topic. And I have some thoughts to share toward the end during staff and planning commission comments about that. But for tonight, since we made this exception last time related to the dark skies item, I think we'll go ahead and let anyone here who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda, or if you have a dark skies comment, we'll take that as well this evening. But we will be having a longer conversation about it, and it's not clear what we will do with those types of comments in the future. So it looks like we have Kathy Flanagan elevated. If you could go ahead and unmute yourself, that would be helpful.
Sorry, it's a mistake. I support what you're doing, but I didn't understand the question, so I don't know how to make myself disappear, but...
Do you have any comments that you would like to offer tonight to the planning commission? Or are you preferring to just participate as an attendee and listen?
Just as an attendee, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair, and we apologize for that accidental elevation to panelists. Chair Kieris, if you would, or what I can offer, if you... For those that are attendees, if you would raise your hand using the Zoom feature, we will then elevate you individually to have a chance to engage with the planning commission this evening. So we'll give you a few seconds, and you can keep your hands up, we'll note it, and then meter each attendee as a panelist one at a time.
So it looks like we have Jim Gould elevated. Hi, Jim. We can... I see you've unmuted. There, we see you. Excellent.
Hello, my name is Nunzi Gould. I submitted two comments to the planning commission, and earlier this afternoon, I resent them because I got a call back, email back, saying that the planning department would respond to my email within two days. So I wasn't sure if the... How comments get relayed to you when they're asked to be delivered by like 5 o'clock on the day of your meeting? And then if there are comments relayed to you by email, how that gets to your commission under the public comment wing? And so just in a very nutshell, I've submitted two comments by email before the 5 o'clock time. And in particular, I'd like to see the planning commission think about our community being resilient in the face of the onslaught and continuing onslaught of growth? And what factors or inclusions should be thought about in the construct of getting voices from the community to maybe be new voices than have been had before the planning commission? Topics that I'm thinking about are kind of the aesthetics of our community, and also the environmental sustainability of our community as we go forward. So I'll leave it just as that, and just so you know, I don't know... I would prefer to have an email to each of the commissioners, or so that when my email gets sent to the commissioners, it actually doesn't go through staff, but it actually is received by the commissioners? Because I'm not sure when you get a comment that I'm delivering to you under the timeline that you're asking. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Nunzi. And did you want to... Okay. I was going to ask if Nunzi wanted any response, but I... Did you... Was there any question that you wanted a response from us from, or was it simply a comment for our reflection?
Well, so that you know, I went through the steps. I got emails to the planning@deschutes.org, and I got a bounce back saying, "Thank you for your email. We'll reply to you within two days." So to me, whatever comments you might have received by 5 o'clock, obviously may not be getting to your commission for today, for public comment. So how many weeks before a topic should the comment come in from the public? Or how does the public know when to make comments in advance of some future meeting that might not even have an agenda item? It's the timing and kind of the process for that.
Yeah, so to reassure you, we did get your two emails prior to tonight's meeting, but I also noticed that Commissioner Swisher is raising his hand. So Commissioner Swisher, if you would like to comment?
I just wanted to say, yes, we did get that, and traditionally, we have got those. However, a lot of times, we may not have had time to read them if they come in late, like a 4, 5 o'clock, or if I've been out of town and come in just in time for the meeting. So of course, the sooner you can submit those kinds of things, from my perspective, the better, just so we have time, ample time, to look at it if you're anticipating some kind of response or input for that particular meeting. But they did come in today, and I'd just say it's based on each individual commissioner, their timing when they actually have an opportunity to read it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. Are there other members who are going to be elevated to comment?
Any other hands up?
We have one more. Chair Kieris, stand by.
We're trying to elevate Bill Kowalik right now. He should be receiving a message that he's being offered to promote to panelist, and he should accept that in his Zoom settings. There should be a pop-up message that's... There we go.
There you go. All right, so it looks like...
Hi.
Hello. Welcome.
Sorry for the little confusion there. Yeah, I'm Bill Kowalik, chairperson of the Oregon chapter of the International Dark Sky Association. And we're very excited about what, you know, you folks are considering here in Deschutes County regarding updating the 1994 lighting ordinance. Because a lot of things have changed since 1994 in technology. LED lights are now available. They tend to be a lot brighter and have a lot more blue light than previous, you know, And I guess other technologies have improved too, like motion detection technology. So you could have lights off at night to then come on when, you know, there's some motion. So handling the security concern that a lot of people have about lights being off at night. And lighting design is greatly improved too, since, you know, the last 25 years. And I think fundamentally, there's been a lot of research completed and understanding of the adverse impact of artificial light at night, not only on people and ability to sleep, but on insects and, you know, the wild ecosystem, the whole idea that, you know, all life on Earth has a circadian rhythm, which is set by evolution, and artificial light at night disrupts that. So there are many reasons such as this to improve the 1994 lighting ordinance, and I look forward to possibly participating as one of the panel members in the citizen group that you folks are putting together. Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment?
Commissioner Kieris, that completes the members of the public that are participating remotely that have expressed interest in communicating to the planning commission.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We now proceed to item five, the dark skies outdoor lighting update and panel selection. I will turn it over to Tarek Rawlings, associate planner.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Tarek Rawlings. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. And exactly today is kind of an update of the progress we've made since our last update to the commission regarding the revisiting this dark skies outdoor lighting ordinance from 1994. In your memo, there was sort of... One of the main highlights of the earlier section of the memo deals with some coordination meetings we had interdepartmentally earlier in December. They had kind of a legal perspective, as well as some concerns from the building safety division, as well as the code compliance division. So largely, kind of in a nutshell there, the summary of the legal constraints from... express from legal counsel is that, based on both state and federal law, it's... We're not able to legally enforce the retroactive enforcement of fixtures that are already in place before a lighting ordinance is actually put into effect. And so in that sense, it would be... It's difficult to actually assign a violation, assess fees, and go through a full code compliance process related to, for example, a really... Like a barn with a really old lighting fixture that's been there since possibly before this 94 ordinance, or even just before if we were to update it through this current process. And so that was a... And that's truly... That's a legal parameter that's fairly common throughout both Oregon, as well as a few other jurisdictions that we've been reviewing during this preliminary research phase. So that is sort of an overarching legal consideration, is just for the commission to keep in mind as we move through and prioritize different parts of this update process, or how we look at the existing ordinance essentially. Other parts of the memo basically focus on the panel. So upcoming meetings on February 10th is kind of where we've scheduled our first convening of this dark skies outdoor lighting panel. And one specific ask I have of the commission today is just whether some of the ideas on page four of your memo there, which includes a short list of essentially types of folks that might be panelists on that panel, whether those seem like they're in the right direction, or whether you would amend any of those positions as they're listed. So that would help me a lot just moving forward. Basically, next steps after this is that I'll reach directly out to folks that would be good fits. We've gotten a lot of interest so far from folks that are both supportive of dark skies ordinance updates, or dark skies in general, and also some of those same folks being interested in serving on the panel. So we do have a pool that's building right now, but we're certainly... I'm certainly willing to look out into and talk to whichever folks you think might be the best fit for the panel itself. So with that, I'm available for any questions you might have related to either the existing ordinance or anything in the memo.
Commissioner Swisher? Oh, you're still muted.
Thank you. The first question I have is about that legal status of not being able to enforce before existing structures. My question is narrower. And let's suppose that after the 1994 ordinance, that at that point, there has been a light put in place? And at that point, we now move forward and we accept or update the code so that there's stricter standards in some manner? So if we do that, then those stricter standards can apply to that light, apparently. But what I want to know is, will that light still be held to the same standards as the 1994 code? In other words, what happens in that interim period to those existing structures that were put in after the 94 code, but before whatever our updates might be?
Certainly. That's a great question. Thank you very much, Commissioner Swisher. And so one kind of, I think, mechanical function of updating an ordinance, so to speak, is it's rarely a wholesale replacement of the language itself. It's usually an amendment or an addition to existing language. And in that sense, it would preserve that 94 language and add on these additional stricter standards like you're describing. That would be one version of how this ordinance might be revisited if it were to be updated. And exactly, so that window between 94 and then this potential new update, that would still be... Any fixtures, new fixtures installed during that window would still be under the review of this 94 ordinance. And so you're exactly right, it would still be under some kind of outdoor lighting ordinance in terms of the 94 existing language, but the stricter restrictions would likely not apply.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Altman?
I have a question. Commissioner Swisher mentioned 1994, but if I'm reading on page 10, the very last sentence on page 10 of the packet says, "Until a date six years after the date of adoption of this code, August 31st, 2000." So where does that language come in if what we were reading in the packet was 1994? Or am I misunderstanding the date of the language that we read?
No, I think you're reading the language exactly right. I think some of the perspective of legal counsel is that that line item is not particularly legally enforceable. It's not... While it might have been hopeful thinking for the language at the time placed in there, it is like... I don't know if there's even a system to really keep track of any kind of lighting fixtures that would have been placed... Like, there's not a building permit review process for just lighting fixtures. And so I don't foresee through our existing systems how that would have even been catalogued, to be honest with you. So I think that that line item is there for the purpose of enforcement, as you're probably reading it. But I don't see a way that it would... I just imagine, and this is part of our discussions with code compliance, is it's really difficult to substantiate some of these alleged violations, especially when they're... They come in in the form of a written complaint, usually without any type of photograph, to kind of confirm either the brightness or the lack of shielding. And so in that sense, I do believe that the code... That code line was intended to be a window of enforcement, sort of a... You have six years to get things under this compliance, but then, as we've probably seen, there's... And as you've... In the memo there, there's just really been a very low number of any kind of formal complaints that are actually filed related to lighting violations, and that since 2000 at least that I've been looking in record. So I think you're... Yeah, it's very astute of you to notice that line. That's definitely was kind of the main focus of a lot of our legal discussions, certainly.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion for the panel. I see we have possibly somebody from Central Oregon Builders Association. That seems like a good idea. I wondered if there is a person who could speak to the different ways that different types of lights work? So for instance, earlier, Bill Kowalik was mentioning that LEDs, particularly because they have more blue light, are experienced as brighter. So some types of lights could have the same number of lumens, but actually be experienced, at least by humans, as really like, ah, super bright. I don't know much about this, but I would like to know a lot more, and I think it might help us think about what changes, if any, would be useful for humans and wildlife. So I'm not sure what the title of that position is, a lighting specialist. You might reach out to Bill and see if there's a person... It may be him, or a person in his organization who just is like the person that knows all the things about light. Maybe it's a professional that works in that field, but it also could just be somebody who really enjoys learning about all of the different ways that light can be experienced.
Certainly. And just to kind of make sure I understand, it's more of like a technical expert on actual function of lighting, of lighting fixtures themselves?
Yeah, and how... I guess maybe the thing I'm most interested in is hearing how different colors of light are experienced in terms of brightness. For instance, if someone's shining a really harsh blue light from their house into my field where I live, that's maybe much more... Has a much bigger impact on my experience than a more yellow warm light, possibly of the same number of lumens? But I'm not sure about that. I'd like to learn about that. And so also, I kind of wonder about if there are some lights that, you know, if you're far away, you can see them much better, so they're more... They have a bigger impact on you than other colors of lights, or other types of lights, LED lights, which is other types of lights, where you're far away from them, so they just look like little glimmers over there, even though maybe they are quite bright when you're standing right next to them? I just don't know how it works. So if somebody that does know how it works, then that way we could say... We could put the language in there that relates to the number of lumens based on the color of light or the type of light that it is, and make sure that we're understanding that correctly, because I think it...
Great.
And I don't... Of course, the ODFW representatives could then tell us how wildlife is impacted by different colors of lights too, or different type of lighting. So then we have maybe the human component and the wildlife. Does that clarify?
Absolutely. For me, that's very clear. Thank you very much, Chair Kieris.
Okay, great. Commissioner Altman?
Another suggestion or consideration for the types of people we may invite to participate on this panel, which would be just regular people who live in areas that have been affected by light pollution. And I say this specifically because I remember back when the whole marijuana issue was going on, a lot of people in Alphalfa were talking about how, you know, their neighbors had their hoop houses, and they were brightly lit. And I know there were conversations with the commissioners, and one commissioner was like, you know, "Call me when you see that." It's like, well, I'm not going to call you at midnight, so, you know, and how do you get a code enforcement person... Like, how do you take care of it from a code enforcement perspective if this is a problem that happens at night and you can't call anybody to come out? So I think that if we opened it up to maybe a couple people in different areas who have experienced, directly from neighbors perhaps, or, you know, in their general neighborhood, these light pollution issues, when there's already supposed to be a dark skies ordinance that doesn't seem like it was being followed in the recent past? That would be my suggestion.
That is an excellent suggestion, and I second that suggestion. Just some citizens that live in the country and have been impacted. I actually remember talking or hearing a gentleman's public testimony about that experience where the light was... It's on a timer, so it's like a motion sensor, and then it... A timer, so it's technically within the current ordinance. But if I'm recalling right, I don't want to misquote anyone, but it seemed to me, wow, you know, that's like really upsetting if the light's going on, you're trying to sleep, and it's like blasting through your window, and then it goes off, and you doze back... You doze back off to sleep, and then it's like on again? So that's something I hadn't thought about, how the impact of having a light that's allowed to be on for up to 20 minutes, and then go off, and then go on and go off, may actually not be a good idea at all for humans or wildlife. So that was a helpful public testimony from him. So maybe talking with him, or if there are... Maybe it's in the packet, we have had five complaints, so maybe if any of those five people might be interested in maybe reaching out to one or two of them, find out what their experiences were. Other people? Would other people like to comment on... Yes, Commissioner Williams?
Five people have complained in the last year, but we know there's so many more that have that feeling. My neighbor could land an airplane. However, all of his lighting is pretty much facing down, so there's nothing I can do. But I do think it is something for public comment. something for public comment. And I don't know how far out we're going on our steps here. But yeah, if we could get some of those folks, you know, and we don't all like own a drone that we can fly over our neighbor's property at night to show the impact of it. But I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, because like I said, my neighbor could, he could be Redmond Airport. And then I live out in the woods, so there's, there's definitely impact for the rural folks.
Excellent. Yes, I have a similar situation going on at my house as well. So I could, I could also share my personal experience with that. So maybe some of us on the planning commissioning also contribute, based, sort of like a subjective experience component. Okay, who else would like to comment? Commissioner Crawford. Actually, I don't think you have your hand raised, but you, I'm not seeing the video, but it just popped up. So I'm guessing that was probably an accident.
I think that was Tony Williams that had her hand up.
Okay, let's hear from, yeah, let's hear from Commissioner Williams.
As another input, I don't know how we can do it, you know, monetarily, but if there could be an incentive, some sort of incentive to, to update lighting. And I just don't know how we would go about that, but we could, what are, what are manners in which we can motivate or incentivize, reward, encourage people to update their lighting, you know, from 94 up? And I would say especially in a lot of the rural areas, where there are no shields and people, you know, are blasting onto a field, can we look at some, what sort of ways we can motivate people to change, to, to encourage them, to, to make them proactively want to change, not digging their feet in, but yeah, be excited to change?
That's a great idea. Commissioner Swisher? Oh, you're still muted.
Thanks for the reminder again. Just responding to Commissioner Williams, thought there, Central Electric Co-op does have incentives for saving energy and a variety of things, whether it's your heat pump or this or that. There may be some regarding lighting too. I'm not sure. There may be someone from Central Electric Co-op that's in tune with their incentives, might be a good person to have talk to us.
And I'm with mid-state electrical co-ops, so maybe reaching out to all of the power companies.
Commissioner Kirby?
Just, Tarek was looking for names you probably already had on your list. For, for COBA, Karna Gustafson, their government affairs person, she probably would be, she would probably be the person I would go to first, and then see if she would be willing to speak. And then if she doesn't, she might have a director that would be an alternative to her. And then I was, when you sent out the list, I mean, I thought the sort of topical areas made sense in terms of the representatives to attend. I didn't realize that we had a Central Oregon Astronomical Society, but I imagine either contacting them or the International Dark Sky Association members probably have astronomers amongst them, and so probably could get a representative from either of those organizations.
And I, just as a quick note, I do have a message in to Karna, just waiting to hear back. So that's a great thing.
You know, I do think, you know, probably in turn, when I saw six, that felt like a good number of people. I think we had more than that on the, the group of farmers and ranchers and food representatives that came to us. You know, I think I probably wouldn't go larger than eight for a panel, just to keep the number of people, you know, to, to have a good conversation and, and let everybody have a chance to speak. That would be my recommendation.
Commissioner Altman, did you raise your hand right around the same time as Commissioner Kirby?
I did. I have a question for Tarek about, maybe this is, in a couple minutes, you can let me know. Is it the intention that, I know that you can't retroactively, you know, go back and say people have to change their lighting, but let's say we come up with new code that will be in effect. One, if someone is redoing a shop or doing a remodel on their property, or putting out, you know, lighting to their barn or something, I would assume that an, an electrical permit for a new lighting or, or a change of location of lighting or something would necessitate adopting the new ordinance, whatever those would be. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, that is correct. So any kind of addition or new work or alterations of existing uses or structures would all have to make sure that essentially not just the new portion, so to speak, has the compliant lighting fixtures, but the entirety of the structure or the use that they're, that they're having reviewed, basically. And then with the electrical permit, it was, that, that's more, because we were kind of talking about the same thing. We're like, do you, do the building folks, do the plans examiners get kind of a chance to look at the specific design of fixtures when they go and review electrical permits? And the answer was no. They were just saying that there is no actual specific design review related to fixtures. At some point, that's, they had legal concerns about steering people towards specific types of fixtures that they were, you know, that might seem arbitrary, essentially. So that was part of, yeah, of, of kind of the buildings' perspective on the permitting process. But you're exactly right. If anything is, is touched, so to speak, from, even if it's an old, older structure that predates the 94 ordinance, it's required to come into compliance, exactly.
Commissioners, if I may, this is, this is Will Groves here. The, the question that you're asking is something that various jurisdictions have adopted dark skies ordinances have struggled with, is about the timing and when to enforce, when to require it. So some jurisdictions have only required that dark, the new dark sky requirements apply to new homes constructed after the date of the ordinance adoption. So basically, everybody who had a pre-existing home gets a pass, and even if they replace the lighting on their house, that lighting continues to be exempt, and only houses newly constructed after a certain date are subject to it. Other ordinances say that any time any lighting is either installed or replaced, that lighting has to come into compliance. So let's say I have a 1984 house and I'm out replacing my porch light, I'm expected to bring that up to shielding standards. And so one of the things that we'll be working through as we get to the ordinance process, and likely on the other side of the panel, would be talking with you about your comfort and preference for when to engage with the public with these. Certainly, you can imagine the code enforcement issues that come up with as we try to establish the installation date of a light, you know, in addition to the problems of trying to establish the brightness. So one of the regular concerns is the code enforcement aspect of it, and we'll be talking about that quite a bit. But I just wanted to acknowledge that the question that you're asking here is exactly one that jurisdictions struggle with, and some choice will need to be made.
A question for either of you. So if I'm understanding correctly, then, so if it's hard to enforce it, it would make sense to try to either encourage people, educate people, incentivize people to install lighting that fits with what we want for dark skies at the outset. So does that mean that, I mean, just in terms of the panel selection, would it be helpful to have whoever is going to be installing the lighting, like an electrician on there to, I mean, maybe, we've got our builder on here, but maybe somebody who can speak to these specifics of what their experience is with the things that you just mentioned?
Yeah, and we've, yeah, this is, sorry, again, Tarek Rawlings, Associate Planner. I was, we've talked briefly with folks from building safety, and then we've also talked just with Peter Gatauski, was, is prepared to speak kind of from the county's internal kind of building experts' perspective, and they, they are well-versed in fixtures and installations. And that, that's one option for maybe hearing some feedback from some, someone like that. But I'd be happy to get someone outside of the county or otherwise, if that was your preference.
Um, not, not necessarily. I just want to make sure we have that component of the timeline of, from lighting being envisioned and then installed, and then annoying to neighbors, and then complained about, like, let's get all of the components in a row and hear from all of those different pieces. Commissioner, sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this, when you have a moment, this is Peter Gatauski, Community Development Director, just want to offer some thoughts, but I can, I can follow suit.
They're related to what, what we were just saying, and we could hear that and then go to Commissioner Williams?
If that's, if that's, that, to your discretion, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Thank you. One of the things that I think is going to be important for the planning commission to think about, and as you're, and thank you for offering feedback on the number of panelists and who you would like to represent this, this, this topic. One of the things that admittedly staff has not heard specifically is how the 1994 lighting ordinance is becoming problematic. The, as I think has been, this is the second or third memorandum that has prepared the planning commission for this forthcoming panel. Some of the, you know, the, the information that's out on the internet, most recently, the international, I think it's the International Dark Sky Declaration for the Sun River area by the Observatory, which is a recent declaration and a noteworthy, a claim for, for that part of our county that has remarkably dark skies, is that, I think that was last year, it, it's still recognized to Deschutes County as lighting ordinance as, as, as being effective. And I'm not saying it's not antiquated, but I, we're going to benefit, I think the planning, staff would benefit, and I think the planning commission would as well, as noted, to have representatives from the rural county, representatives from amateur astronomer organizations and associations, to really kind of audit our code and tell us what is, what's missing or what's changed. Because from some respects, what I've gathered, just in terms of how Deschutes County can, is recognized for having a lighting ordinance that admittedly is almost, you know, 25-plus years old, is that it, it's, it still has some real benefits in terms of its emphasis on, on, on shielding and, you know, lighting and lumens and whatnot. So I just offer that for your perspective as well, because thus far, we, we've heard from most people about the importance of dark skies, but not necessarily kind of poking holes, and there may very well be many in our, in our existing ordinance, but it'll be helpful to hear specifically about what's changed in relationship to our 94 lighting ordinance.
Thank you, Peter. That is good feedback. Let's hear from Commissioner Williams.
So I was going to talk about another item, but Mr. Gatauski talking about that. So I know this is only county, but page two of the memorandum, which would have been page four in the entirety, applicants, does not require an application for outdoor lighting review, nor any requirements for applicants to submit separate outdoor lighting plans in association with development proposals and application materials. So my neighborhood is really close to the new Caldera Springs release. And, you know, we, we can't apply this to the city, but why don't we have, when developments are put in, why are not we asking them to submit a lighting plan so that we know that they are in compliance? I, I don't think there's a huge dollar amount that would be involved with that. And like with Caldera, it's, and I'm, and I'm not exactly sure, but it's, you know, 200 lots, and there's going to be streetlights, and just let's nip it in the bud before it becomes a problem.
Yeah, if I may.
I think that's something from 94 that might be consideration.
Yeah, if I may, Commissioner Williams, and it's a great point. One of, I, I did reach out to James Lewis, who's the Sun River Homeowners Association Executive Director, General Manager. He replaced Hugh Palsec, who was a former planning commissioner. One of the things that the Sun River HO, Sun River Association does is they have a design review team that ensures that Sun River's covenant codes and restrictions, as it pertains to lighting, gets explicit review. And this is over and beyond structural, electrical and mechanical obligations for, for new predominantly single-family dwellings. I'll, I'll just be honest, we don't have the, the bandwidth to review lighting fixtures, lighting, lighting shielding techniques at the building permit intake process. As much as we might want to, we, we, we are, our, our staff limitations really kind of focus on, as noted in the memo, on those primary structural, mechanical, and electrical, and plumbing responsibilities. That's not to say that public information, and certainly the planning commission, if this is something that is, I don't mean to diminish this opportunity, as you characterized it, Commissioner Williams. I'm just being honest about how our department is structured today to handle this particular circumstance. There may be ways to provide education outreach, and certainly this planning commission, if you find over the course of the panel, you want to elevate this level of review, you certainly can do so, and we'll carry that recommendation or comment to the board. But I, I feel obligated to tell you our, our staffing limitations as they're in place today.
So, and I was just talking about developments, not like individual homeowners. I meant like street lighting, things like that. Not each individual home, but if a development's coming in, to make sure, and, and that was, and I understand, we're, we're all short-staffed. I'm a business owner. I'm short-staffed. But it's, it's just a thought for developments, you know, individual houses, that, that's different. But just to make sure, I know there are a lot of new developments and apartment complexes going on in Lapine. So just so we can make sure that builders aren't taking a shortcut with their budgets as well. They're not trying to cut corners. Just my thought.
Yeah, just to piggyback on your thought, we also, you know, we might be getting a new destination resort, the Thornburg Resort. That's a big resort with lots of homes going in, so that would be another place where that could make a really big difference in how much light is in the sky, depending on if lighting is installed that is supporting the dark skies or not. So, but I appreciate what Peter's saying, that currently, the way things are structured, that, that would not be a thing that could work. But maybe there are some ways to think about that, or recommendations we might want to make to the board when we get to that point of the process. Okay, Commissioner Altman?
Yeah, to piggyback on, on that, it would be interesting, when we have the panel, to hear from, you know, the people in the know who are part of the IDA, the International Dark Skies Association, I think it was, of Oregon. And also, as you brought up, Vice Chair or Chair?
Yeah.
The, um,
Vice Chair Altman?
Yeah. Certain like colors of lighting that are, you know, softer, better, whatever, that, you know, if this is a priority for us, and if this hasn't been done since 1994, I think we have a real opportunity to here to create and shape the future of the dark skies. And it sounds like, I don't think I've heard anybody in any of the public testimonies say that they don't think this is a good idea. So if we look to people who are experts in the dark skies, and also people who are experts in maybe, you know, lighting design and color and whatnot, to figure out, I mean, maybe we do write it into code to say somehow, you know, listening to the experts, like, it has to be certain lumens between this range and this range, and it has to be this style of light. You know, I mean, I think if you're going through a whole permitting process, me having gone through this recently for some work done on my property, you know, it takes a long time. for some work done on my property, you know, it takes a long time, and so, you know, I, as someone who does support dark skies, I would be willing to take, you know, an extra two weeks or whatever to get my permit, to make sure that it conforms to what I hold as a priority for, you know, Mother Nature and our beautiful dark skies and our environment and whatnot. So, you know, I understand that staffing is always a concern, um, you know, I, I think we should still make it priority somehow. So, and I think that, I look forward to that kind of discussion when we have our panel.
I think most, I think most folks too, when it's written into code, they're going to follow the rules. No one's out to intentionally, you know, throw a wrench into the system.
Madam Chair, can I, uh, this is Peter Gatauski, can I, um, plant a seed for your panel and help, help, uh, uh, the thought process as you think about eventually making recommendations to the board? If you, if, take a look at, um, it's on, it's page four of the actual lighting ordinance, take a look at 15.10.130. Um, and I'll just, I'll read it for anybody who's listening at home. Submission of Plans and Evidence of Compliance with Code, and it relates to subdivision plaits, so this, this is, directly ties into both Chair Kieris and Commissioner Williams' response about, at the subdivision level, destination resorts, of course, are going to, could involve several subdivisions, but this acknowledges that all provoked subdivisions and partitions within Deschutes County that include outdoor lighting fixtures or street lighting shall be subject to the provisions of the ordinance. I'm not aware that our subdivision ordinance, as a requirement, cross-references this section. So, we, we may be somewhat fortunate that most developers are mindful of, of lighting and shielding and whatnot, but, um, and we can confirm that, um, at the panel, when you're engaging staff and follow-up remarks, but that could be, uh, an important patch, a code patch, so that at the time of the tentative plat, uh, or, you know, uh, there's a, there's a demonstrated commitment of, of understanding the lighting ordinance, and it could become a condition of approval. So, those are just, just picking up on both Chair Kieris and Commissioner Williams' recent remarks. So, um, again, staff is, you know, wants to be a, you know, a collaborator in this as well, just, you know, given the importance of this topic.
Thank you. Um, who else would like to comment? Uh, Commissioner Williams?
So, talking about the, uh, the incentives, is it something worth taking to a state level and having the state talk with all the power companies and/or, and I, I don't know, uh, the exact direction, but is it something worth taking to a state level as a tax incentive for, you know, maybe people of older homes, uh, or people who, you know, you know, is it something worth taking to a state level? I, and I'm not quite sure how I'm seeing it, but if we could do it as a tax incentive, money is what really makes a lot of people, uh, take action. So, I'm, I'm throwing that out there. I'm, I'm not quite sure where I'm grasping it, but I, I see it as a possibility.
Commissioners, this is Will Groves again. I'm recalling back, so I was originally hired in 2004 with the county, and I think that from the original lighting ordinance, which went into effect in 2000, I think we actually had some lights to give away. I, I recall somebody walking into a building and getting one of a couple of shielded lights that we'd had left over from that program, and I think we were giving them away. So, the, the notion that there might be some sort of way, I'm not sure how that was funded or how that, where they were stored, but I, I remember somebody coming in and retrieving one, uh, during my early days there while we still had some of them. So, it may be possible for, you know, some sort of incentive along those ways to be structured. So, we'll definitely look into that.
I, uh, when I built, we, we got new light bulbs, um, so I'm thinking, uh, like people for upgrading, uh, switching out, uh, remodels, uh, like Chairman Altman did, uh, something like that. So, yeah, just, just a thought to motivate people.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, so, if there are no other comments, um, on this item, I think we will go ahead and proceed to Planning Commission and staff comments. Um, let's go ahead and get started with Peter Gatauski. Peter, do you have any comments that you would like to share?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Kieris, and congratulations to you and Vice Chair Altman. I look forward to coordinating with you, our staff as well, not just the two of you, of course, but to the entire Planning Commission over the course of, uh, the next, uh, several years. Uh, I have a couple of comments. I'll let Will Groves, uh, give you an update on the comprehensive plan update and, um, and the, the proposals we received and, and a selection committee opportunity. A couple of things to share with you, um, we've had some recent resignations in the long-range, in long-range planning, uh, excuse me, we have, we've had a, a couple of resignations that are impacting our long-range planning staff. Uh, we have a associate planner and a senior planner that have taken jobs, one, um, in Sisters, uh, Matt Martin, who many of you have had an opportunity to engage with, he's becoming, uh, principal planner for the City of Sisters. That starts on, uh, February 1st. And then Angie Brewer, who was, uh, senior planner with us here for just about five months, has taken a position with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Uh, this has, uh, created some significant challenges for us. We, we have, uh, some open recruitments for assistant planners, and it's really hitting us hard in, in development reviews. So, we're tapping into our long-range planners, Tarek Rollins, Kyle Collins, and even our planning manager, Will Groves, is, is spending time just to prop up that, uh, section of ours, given the tremendous land use volume that we continue to experience. So, it will have some impact in, on, on long-range planning projects, not the comprehensive plan, but it may, uh, delay a bit the Tumalo Community Plan and our engagement in Sisters Country Trails. Not significantly, but it could set us back a, a couple of months. Um, so I just bring that to your attention. We are, admittedly, like so many employers, uh, having challenges with retention and recruitment. Secondly, a brief update on Senate Bill 391. Commissioner Swisher got to hear this presentation during our S- Sisters Vision Implementation or, and Action Team. Uh, Senate Bill 391 relates to rural accessory dwelling units. Uh, there was, uh, significant expectations that we would be in a position to develop amendments to our code to allow rural accessory dwelling units, uh, to be cited in rural residential zones in Deschutes County in 2022. Uh, through the Deschutes County's, uh, engagement and initiative in this process, uh, we discovered that there were broken links, as it relates to another bill, which is called Senate Bill 762, that's addressing wildfire mitigation. What this means is, there's, is that there, there's, it looks like there's going to be a legislative concept introduced into the short session, which starts February 1st and goes through March 7th, that corrects a citation for the requirement of defensible space. Uh, the, the broken link pertains to antiquated citations for the Department of Forestry, but because of wildfire mitigation requirements from the Senate Bill 762 legislation, the state fire marshal, um, at the end of this calendar year is required to identify defensible space requirements. And, and so, uh, we're hopeful that we'll get this legislative, uh, fix in place. It'll get adopted and be in place, uh, in, in time for the new year. The, there's some other benefits that could, that come, come along with this short delay, um, and that pertains to fire hardening. Uh, the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services, at the end of October, and this is stemming from Senate Bill 762, no, excuse me, yeah, Senate Bill 762 as well, um, is require, is require fire, fire hardening measures to be identified by the end of October, and then they're in place, they become effective in April of 2023. So, this is a long-winded way of saying that in a year from now, I think we can plan on engaging the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners with amendments that will address fire hardening and defensible space, so that we can have clear, consistent, universal, uh, provisions that apply to rural accessory dwelling units as we go forward. Uh, in coordination with several state agencies, two weeks ago, uh, it was clear to me, and I've conveyed this to the Board of County Commissioners, that we don't have any other opportunity to go forward in the interim. So, uh, while it's disappointing to, to many of our constituents, it, it's, uh, it's a better scenario than the alternative, which would be to wait until the regular session in 2023 and, and have to, uh, you know, see the outcome of, of, uh, legislation addressing, uh, these circumstances. So, let me pause there. Um, I have, I have one more, or two more points to make, but I don't know if the Planning Commission has any follow-up remarks about Senate Bill 391.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions or remarks? Okay, let's hear the next item.
Um, I wanted to let the Planning Commission know that in light of Commissioner Hudson's resignation, that there's an active recruitment occurring for an at-large position, and that position is open until January 28th at 5:00 PM. And, uh, we'll, I'll keep the Planning Commission informed about that process. Uh, the Board of County, in the past, the, the Community Development Director with the Board of County Commissioner, uh, has been involved in that candidate selection and interview process. So, we'll treat that as a high priority and bring someone on board, hopefully, uh, no later than, 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 than March 1st, but, uh, I will keep you informed about that. And then the only other, uh, my closing remark is, um, we don't have a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for January 27th, so the next meeting will be February, uh, 10th. Of course, the Dark Skies Panel will, will lead that effort. We're also preparing you for a water panel that will occur on February 24th, and there'll be two panels, as presently conceived, one on February 24th, the second on March 10th. And then I think we're also, we, we think we can be in a position to share with you how we're preparing for the Tumalo Community Plan, some of the existing condition reports, uh, some, you know, uh, trends that we think we'll be seeing in that community. So, we're doing everything we can to, uh, engage the Tumalo community while we, uh, wait for the Oregon Department of Transportation to finalize the grant agreement. So, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Uh, Commissioner, or, uh, Vice Chair Altman?
Thank you. I actually had a follow-up question for Peter about, um, the, the recruitment process for the Dark Skies Committee. Is that who, are people submitting applications? How are they submitting applications? How will you be deciding? When will that be happening? Obviously before February 10th, but, um, has that been announced to the public, or how is that recruitment process working?
So, great, great question, uh, Vice Chair Altman. This is different than, um, than, say, like the Cannabis Advisory Panel, um, that's, that's formally recognized by the Port, Board of County Commissioners. So, similar with the water panel, we, uh, we're looking to the Planning Commission to give us direction on the type of representatives that you would prefer to have on the panel. And then, in this case, uh, Tarek will engage and, and corral, uh, six to eight representatives, based on your input this evening, and invite them to participate, get, get confirmation, and then they'll, of course, we'll have a packet for you a week prior to that meeting, so you understand who's participating, who they represent. I, I can see us offering some, uh, sample questions for your consideration just to get the process moving along, but that, that's how that'll work, as well as with the water panel.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Will Groves. I'm, uh, going to take this opportunity to update you on the comprehensive plan, uh, process. So, as you know, we're moving forward on updating the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan. An RFP was sent out, to which we received three responses from consultants, and we are now moving towards selecting one of those consultants to, uh, perform the work. The first step in that process is to form an evaluation committee to score the proposals that we've received, and we've, uh, cast a broad net to get members of the community, including the building community, uh, nonprofit organizations, uh, relevant county staff, and we would like to, uh, try and recruit one or two of the Planning Commissioners as members of that committee. And what we'd be looking for is, uh, a few hours of commitment here in the next, uh, week or so. Uh, you would receive a copy of the packets, instructions on how to score them, and you'd be asked to review those things and provide a score for each of the, uh, submittals that we received. I know, uh, Commissioner Crawford had expressed some interest in this, but we were hoping to get, uh, at least one or two of you engaged in this, and this would, this would continue into, uh, interviews ultimately of the, of the consultants there and selection of one of the consultants. So, I was wondering if any of you might be available for that or would like to participate.
I see Commissioner Williams is raising a pen. And a thumbs up. Okay, so you've got two.
Okay, so I will, uh, unless there's any objections or further, uh, members who'd like to join, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Crawford, I will send you a copy of the, uh, review packet. And, uh, the notion here is, is that there'll be, there'll be about a week after you receive the email to get through that review, and those, uh, those reviewers who provide a timely submittal will be included in the average in the scoring. So, uh, if you have any questions, following up on the email, certainly come back to me. Hoping to get this out by Tuesday at the latest for a, a one-week review period. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, is Tarek still here? Does Tarek, oh? Does Tarek-
I am still here, sorry. I didn't know if there was a question there, but no, I, I don't have any further comment. I really appreciate the, uh, Mr. Gatauski being here and able to offer kind of that overarching managerial perspective on all the constraints and, uh, opportunities there. So, thank you very much.
Excellent. Um, okay, uh, Commissioners, um, maybe I'll just go down the line and just check in. If you don't have any comments, that's totally fine. Um, Commissioner Crawford?
I do have a couple of comments. Um, after our last meeting in December, um, I asked a rather pointed question, uh, to the panel. Um, and I want you to know that you all received an email from Linda Anspatch. I did, uh, reach out to the Anspatches and, um, spent two to three hours with them, uh, discussing the comments from that night's meeting. It was a very good, uh, meeting, I think, on, on both our parts. Um, I'm not sure any decisions were made in any way, shape, or form. Um, but again, uh, Linda Anspatch wanted me to, uh, again, convey that they would, agriculture would like to have some priorities, and they'd like to have some special considerations in dealing with bees. And again, I reiterated to her that, that we were under some constraints with what we could do with special groups, because when you open the door for one group, you got another one that's waiting to get in the door shortly thereafter, and she seemed to understand that. So, I just wanted you all to know that, um, I did reach out to them, and, and we did have a very good, uh, discussion. So, I wanted you to know where that ended up.
Thank you. Uh, do you, any other comments? Um, okay, let's hear from Commissioner Kirby.
Um, I just wanted to, well, first, uh, congratulations to, um, Chair Kieris and Vice Chair Altman on your elections. I'm very excited to be led by two strong women, um, over the next year. So, um, and then I also wanted to, um, just share with the Commission that, um, this- So, and then I also wanted to just share with the Commission that this, because we're not going to be meeting our second meeting of the month, I wanted to share that this will be my last meeting for probably a couple of months. I'm going on parental leave. My husband and I are expecting a baby in three weeks. And so I'm going to be on maternity leave from work and kind of mirror maternity leave with the Planning Commission. I'm not a person who likes to overpromise and underdeliver. So it may be that I have a, you know, a baby that has very good temperament and I will be looking for some evenings away for a couple of hours to, to join a Zoom call. So you may see me. And I also wanted to let staff know that if you guys are short of a quorum, if you give me a couple of days' notice, maybe after the first month in March, I may be able to pull away and participate. So just wanted to, I don't want to be an impediment to getting business done and be helpful if I can, but also want to have that time away. So, thanks.
Thank you, and congratulations. Let's see, Commissioner Swisher, do you have any comments?
Yes, a couple. Currently serving as the Vice Chair of the Tollgate Homeowners Association, our meeting on Tuesday, about half of the meeting had a long conversation about dark skies, a lot of interest in the Tollgate area. And they were aware that the Planning Commission was having some kind of event tonight. I tried to fill them in on what I knew of the process at the moment. And I imagine there'll be homeowners in the future participating. There's, seems to be interest and consensus of maintaining dark skies and reducing light pollution to neighbors, that type of thing in our neck of the woods. So basically, just wanted to let you know from a homeowner's group and perspective, this is a really hot topic. And so I think that may be true throughout Sisters Country, if not the entire county. The second comment I would like to make is that as there's an opening for our former chair who has just left the Planning Commission, my eight-year tenure will be up in June 30th this year. And so we'll be recruiting for a new person to represent the Sisters Country area. And I'm not sure when that, that process will occur, probably March or April. But basically, at that point, I have let sort of the local groups in this area know that I'll be leaving the Planning Commission at that point and to keep their ears open for recruitment in case they have interest in participating. So again, this has been a tremendous opportunity to participate in our county processes and still have a few months to go before my has-been. And have enjoyed it and will continue to help in whatever, including if need be, in a little bit of transition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swisher. Vice Chair Altman?
I don't really have any updates except to say congratulations to Commissioner Kirby. It's very exciting and I hope you have a wonderful experience with your new baby. And also congratulations to Chair Kiras in your role as Chair. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Williams?
I reiterate, Vice Chair Altman, congrats, Commissioner Kirby. Slow and slow, that is the tempo. And good job chairing your first meeting, Chair Kiras. Look forward to working with everyone going forward.
Thanks very much. Yeah, I thought this was a good meeting. I do, I did say earlier, I had a couple of comments about when members of the public come to meetings, hoping to make a comment that is on the agenda, but when the agenda item is not a public hearing. So if it's a public hearing, then that's what we're here to do is to take public comment. So like today, we had an agenda item about dark skies. And we wanted to hear from people that had comments about everything today. I made that decision because as it stands now, I think that it is at the discretion of the Chair. In reading Robert's Rules, I noticed there is a heavy emphasis on group decision-making and the spirit being that groups should decide how they want to conduct their meetings. And so I'm, I'm comfortable just deciding for the group, but I thought, why not have a discussion about it and see what everyone thinks? And perhaps even have a formal motion where we decide what we're going to do with this going forward. I, I have a little bit of concern about leaving it up to the Chair, myself, or a future Chair just because, you know, it's so easy to say, for me, it's so easy to say, oh my gosh, dark skies, I want to hear everything. This is something I'm really passionate about and very interested in. I want to learn as much as I possibly can. But if the topic were of a different nature, maybe there were 20 people who came and wanted to talk about an item on the agenda that's not a public hearing, then I would have some concern that maybe that, all of that important testimony is not getting in the public record. And then also, what if that seems overwhelming to have so many speakers, but then they're like, hey, you did it for the dark skies people, how come you're not doing it for us? That would, in my mind, be a legitimate gripe. So a couple of options tonight, we could talk about this now and decide, maybe have a motion or decide what we want to do. Or we could consider having it on the agenda for another meeting. And then that would give everyone a chance to think about it. And then we have a discussion and decide from there. Or you guys can just tell me to pick and I'll pick. That's fine, too. But it seemed a little bit more in the spirit of the Robert's Rules. Let's, let's decide as a group what we think here. Anyone want to comment on that?
I would like to comment.
Yes. Uh-oh.
We may need more time as a, as a group to consider it and think about it, but I would like to add a brief historical perspective from my history, which is over seven and a half years now I've been on the Planning Commission. And essentially, the whole idea was that you don't want to muddle up your hearings with comments outside of that hearing procedure, just in front of the hearing, have people comment, et cetera, as well as in the next time if a hearing is extended. Ultimately, just the perspective that I have, we've been very open and in fact, talked about embracing the public comments. And at that point, the Chair had some discretion previous to me, the previous Chairs would decide, let's go ahead and have that public comment during the public comment section, or why don't you hold on until we're actually discussing that as Planning Commission on the agenda and we'll provide a little time for you there. It was a very simple, easy procedure. People could comment, but as long as it wasn't tied up with the hearing dates and hearings, then we were attempting to be extremely open to all aspects of the community coming forward, bringing their concerns forward. So that's the perspective I have and probably what led to some of my comments in the December meeting, basically, when we discussed it then.
That's very helpful to hear the history and the context. Do you, do you, this is a question for Commissioner Swisher. Do you think we should have a group discussion about this going forward? Or do you feel that that kind of summarizes everything you'd like to say about it?
Well, that, those are simply my perspectives and comments. Commissioner Crawford, Commissioner Kirby has been here a long time also. So I think those people with a longer-term history should talk about that. In addition, more importantly, the current newer, our commission members should have some opportunity to reflect on it and discuss and talk about it. So I think it does warrant, from my perspective, another conversation, but I'm not going to be here after June. And so at that point, I would think the rest of you would want to have that conversation.
Okay, other comments? Commissioner Williams?
And the newest of everyone, a thought that would be to limit time. If it's, if it's not during public comment, you know, two minutes to talk or something like that, short and concise. And I'm not saying we should allow public comment if it's not during public hearings, but if we are going to, we limit the amount of time folks can speak.
Anyone else, other comments?
Madam Chair?
Stu, Commissioner Crawford, then Vice Chair Altman.
Thank you, Chair Kiras. I guess a couple thoughts from my perspective, having said it in your chair. I think, I think we've got to be careful that we don't let our agenda get too diluted with comments. I'd like to see our agendas followed fairly closely. I think that it's very important when we're doing the hearing that the comments be during that part of the agenda item. I also think that in a case like tonight, I guess, that, you know, maybe it would have been a bit more appropriate to hear the dark sky comments during our discussion about dark skies rather than prior to that. And that goes back just to following the agenda. I think as Chair, if you state very clearly, when we get to this item, that this is an item for items that are not on the agenda and make that very clear, I think, then that helps the people in the audience, those people that want to speak, know when they can be on. They come with excitement, trepidation, and everything else that goes along with making a public address. And we need to guide them a little bit. And so I would encourage you just to let them know, hey, if you're talking about this, save it until that's an agenda item. If you've got something out of the blue and want to talk about traffic on some back road, then that's fine to bring it up during that agenda item. But otherwise, I'd like to see it follow the agenda a little bit closer. But that's my experience.
Okay, excellent comments. Vice Chair Altman?
Thank you. My question would be from a legal perspective, or maybe Peter could answer, I don't, or Nick could answer, is that if we, you know, if we do it once, do we have to do it always? Or is it at the Planning Commission's discretion? You know, today's agenda was very light. And if we had more people who wanted to talk about the dark skies ordinance, I think we could have made time. And I'm always, always happy when people want to participate. So I, I don't really want to do anything to discourage that within, I agree with Commissioner Crawford, you know, within where it would fit in the agenda. But I'm just wondering from a legal perspective, you know, is it like yes, always? Or maybe it's up to you guys, or, you know, yes, no, or somewhere in the middle? So I would be interested in hearing that feedback.
Commissioner Kirby?
I had some of the same concerns. And actually, it would be interesting to hear from perhaps Peter to get his feedback. Because the other thing I worry a little bit about is, you know, sometimes we have very full agendas. And staff does a lot to try to figure out what's a reasonable amount to be able to cover. And when you've got the possibility of open, we always plan for open comments, but comments around non-hearing items, and we really should be consistent, then it can become a little unwieldy, probably trying to figure out how to plan for that. And so that's where, you know, perhaps we start getting into, you know, limiting time. But we, if it's, if something is not a public hearing, we don't want to then create a public hearing out of it. And we want to make sure that we have capacities and a process of being able to record potentially information that could be useful. So I would be very interested in hearing from, from the staff as well.
Peter, could you comment maybe on this?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think at the end of the day, it's, it's the Planning Commission's discretion. And, you know, from a legal standpoint, if there's not a formal set of legislative amendments, I don't think you're going to violate one's due process. You know, I offered a couple of comments as you navigate this, this dynamic between, you know, as Commissioner Swisher noted, I think the meeting previously, it's worth emphasizing, the Planning Commission is the citizen involvement arm and welcomes community input. And at the same time, as Commissioner Crawford articulated, you know, there's, there's agenda, we have at times very detailed agendas and we're trying to stay true to form. Some of the things that you could consider, of course, every meeting is going to be different. Every, every, every meeting's agenda may afford opportunities where people want to participate, like they did the last two meetings concerning dark skies. So a couple, a couple of strategies that you could consider employing is if you find a topic that's just getting vetted early, like the Water Panel or dark skies, that we don't know, we're not trying to be presumptuous about where it's leading in terms of any future code amendment. But if you find that there's great interest in a topic, even as it's getting vetted early, you could direct, you could acknowledge the people that are, are interested in speaking. And I think Commissioner Crawford made an excellent suggestion, when they're identified, keeping them in, under that agenda topic because they, to the extent you allow them to speak, could really offer some value-added perspectives. But if you find that there's really this tremendous input, you're also balancing the fact that you want to make sure that community input is broadly acknowledged and promoted. The Planning Commission could direct staff, you know, at the next meeting, let's have a, let's have a public comment period on, on, in this example, dark skies. And then it's, you know, it's noted in the agenda, we can integrate it. And, and that way, you're, you're allowing all members of the public, to the extent that they're participating and paying attention, the opportunity to engage. So those are a couple of strategies, again, under these topics that are really just being vetted and broadly understood, that, you know, could at some point in the future lead to some formal actions. But you could consider any one of those. But really, at the end of the day, I think the Planning Commission gets to make that decision. You get that, that latitude and discretion. And as staff, we're willing to accommodate you in any number of ways as we've outlined.
Okay, well, I'll summarize. It seems like everybody is in agreement that we all highly value public input and want to do whatever we can to encourage it. We all also value a nice organized agenda and a sort of a plan and a process that we stick to. We don't want, I, I didn't hear anyone saying we should just do whatever and chill out about it. Everyone seems to agree that it's nice when we are doing what we say we're going to do. And there are other ways, like if we get concerned about the agenda being too big, or if the public comment is getting too big, it seems like there are a couple ideas of how to manage that with either time limits or saying, wow, there's a lot of interest on this, let's make an agenda item for next time. We'll invite everybody and make sure there's fair advertising of, or fair notice to all of the different people that might want to participate. So I, I'm really pleased with this discussion. So how about this? Let's, I'll propose that we close tonight's discussion, but people think about it. And then we can also come back around to it next time. Does anyone object to that? Objection? Okay, then we'll do that. A very informal decision-making process. Okay, are there, well, I'll congratulate Commissioner Kirby. I'm really excited for you. And also, we'll congratulate Vice Chair Altman. I think it's going to be really fun to work with you and I'm just really excited. So, thanks, everyone. And if there are no other comments, I will go ahead and close the meeting.